Chair, Kim Seh is here this evening and also with members of our math committee. Can you do a presentation of what she's, the work that she's done the last three years with the math committee and then provide you with a recommendation for textbook adoption for grade's capable. She's been a lot of great work with us, I'll let Kim take that over, but don't you say it all up.
Well, she sets up. We all went over and said hello to our new student representative, Nikki, but we didn't get, you didn't get an opportunity to welcome her, welcome you and introduce yourself. Can you just tell everybody and all our fans at home who you are?
I'm Nikki Van Gucht-Rahman, I'm junior, going to Zinger, and I'm the new National School of Student Council.
Well, hi, you're welcome.
Picture, lovely green. When Jeff asked me to do this last week, I was secretly thrilled because we have really been through a journey and I'm dying to share it. But I do want to recognize that I have representatives here from each of the three elementary schools, Nikki, by the way.
I do, me too.
And I'd like to introduce Marlene Pettigas, she's first grade teacher at Memorial, Lori McNeil, who is our math specialist at U-Lock, and then my Dana White, Karen from fifth grade at Dale Street. So even though I know your time is very precious, I hope you'll bear with me as I take you. Three years ago, when I started the position of Director of Curriculum, one of the first projects that the former superintendent asked me to look into was our math program. As it was, we had two different things going on, K-3 and then something else at Dale Street, and it just so happened Common Core had just come out, and he wanted me to really take a look at how we were doing, what we needed to do, and we decided to put together a team. So in February of 2012, we put out an application for a vertical team of teachers. I was looking for two teachers in each grade level and then, of course, our math specialists to join us, and we had no problem finding people, as a matter of fact, original three are here. And we established the goals really were to start by taking a look at this lovely document, the standards, Massachusetts frameworks, that incorporated the Common Core. And then we also wanted to understand the guiding principles that started this document, really understand what was driving the ideas behind it. And then we also wanted to understand the standards for mathematical practice, which were kind of new to us and really habits of mind that are embedded in the entire math curriculum, K-12, pre-K-12, things like perseverance and problem solving. We also wanted to take a look at aligning the curriculum with the Common Core, our existing maps, take a look at them, identify gaps, she's shaking her head, identify redundancies, document any kind of supplemental material that we needed that wasn't provided with the programs we were using. We also wanted to develop a consistent curriculum map. We didn't, because people had been working on math for years, it sort of evolved into everybody doing different things, so we thought it was important that we be consistent. And then we also wanted to make sure that we were sharing this information through vertical teams. That has been a common theme with our elementary group for many years, that because the way we're set up with the three different schools, we don't always get to talk with one another. So we're trying, and Jeff's been so supportive of making sure that we do that wherever we can. And then we felt that this team should also really lead with their colleagues, their grade-specific colleagues, through a new understanding. Blocky goals, and through it all, we basically had just two essential questions. One was how do we integrate the Common Core standards into our curriculum maps and units? There was no talk of a new math program at this point. And then how do we communicate that to the entire K-5 staff? So basically, we took from February of 2012 to September of 2012, after school, on their own time, with a research and development stipend, to take a look at those curriculum maps and the pacing within their own grade levels, share it with each other, and then also pull from a variety of resources supplemental materials, so that they could then figure out a way to communicate it to their peers. In the fall of 2012, we had two new principals, Louise Snyder and Donna Olson, so we decided that it would be a great way to start the year by bringing the entire pre-K-5 staff together at Memorial. And in the morning of this professional development day in October, we, the administrators and the vertical team, do you remember this, did a presentation of the Common Core and the Massachusetts state frameworks, the work that we had been doing, and then it was, it was really, really nice that each member of the vertical team did their, a lens of their grade level. What does it look like in first grade, in third grade, in fifth grade? Specifically, what should you be focusing on? What can you let go of? Those types of things. That was the morning presentation, and then in the afternoon, we had grade-specific breakups, where the leaders, the vertical team, again, watched their specific grade levels through the, the work that they had done those past few months. Are you good, Nikki? I get excited about this stuff and I think, it is late.
It looks like we have three more.
We're one hit.
Time flies. Now, also during that year, so that kicked us off, we decided that we were going to have consistent grade level meetings, hopefully twice a month, where we would keep those curriculum maps alive and have the grade-specific groups talking about them. We also had small vertical teams where we, I would lead a half-day job embedded, where we would pull, say kindergarten, first grade teachers. Let's really take a little bit of what's expected. And then we did two and three, and we did K-1 and two, and we did two and three, and we did three and four, and we did three, four, and five. Basically, if you think about Carrie Powell's fifth grade teacher, yes, she's interested in kindergarten and first grade, but not to that level. So that's why we wanted to do the smaller vertical teams, because then the large vertical team was still communicating, so they were taking the information they learned in the small groups and in their grade level groups, and we were having conversations about what do we need to do. Now, all along, we were saying, this is a lot of work, but we were, we were learning as we went. The summer of 2013, we purchased, we decided that we really needed more information assessment-wise with our students, so we purchased Star Math, which really is used in many, many districts, and it's a web-based resource that gives us information on where our students are and what we need to do. It's a test that the kids take, and, sorry about that. Go ahead, dear.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, sorry. What we decided was to pull together another group of teachers, I think all three of you were on that group, too, where for two days in July, we had the Star Math folks come in and really train us how to use this resource. And then we developed protocol for test-taking, we developed training for the grade-level leaders, uh, grade-level teachers, we trained the teachers, the principals were great giving us the time right at the beginning of the year, because what this does, it's called a universal screener, where it basically, it gives you a baseline. It's the same test that all students take, and it helps the teachers understand where those individual children are and what they need. So we wanted to get that done early in the year, so that we could, that would drive our instruction throughout the year. It also led us to understand that we needed some help in how to interpret data, that we were, we were compiling all of this data, but then what did we do with it? So it was a multifaceted project, for sure. Sorry. What's this?
I know, I'm very excited.
Okay. So at the same time, we knew that we needed professional development, we always need professional development, but we were lucky to find a math consultant whose name is Shapali Fox. She speaks all over the state, she's spoken for National Council for Teachers with Math. She's one of those people that the minute you meet her, you know, she's all about math and just brilliant woman, so I was so fortunate to find her and to have her come and work with our elementary teachers. So we decided that we needed to survey the teachers and find out what they felt they need for professional development. They clearly said they needed more training on the standards themselves, they wanted to experiment with math centers and guided math, they wanted help in putting problem-solving, embedding it into everything that they do, as Common Core suggested should, and they wanted common assessment, they wanted some confidence in building assessments. So we developed six half-days per grade level that first year. She would go to Memorial and work with kindergarten, kindergarten teachers in the morning, first grade in the afternoon, and she would do that for each of the three schools and then start over again, so that every grade level had six half-days. What I loved about that training, I think it was a little bit painful for the teachers because we almost learned, we didn't know what we didn't know, I'll put it that way. And she came in at a level that perhaps we weren't quite ready for, but what I truly loved about her work was she was modeling the shifts, the instructional shifts, that the Common Core really is expecting math teachers to provide. And she actually helped us gain such a deeper level, really understanding what it was that we didn't understand, if that makes sense. We're, okay, Chris, now we're up to 2013. 2014, I brought the math study team back together, and we had some new goals. We started thinking, okay, we're, we're really pretty shocked right now, we have all this professional development, we understand the standards, it's time for a program, because it became very clear that what we had wasn't meeting our needs, and that we were, we were drawing ourselves crazy, we were, we were building tests, we were pulling materials from everywhere, we knew what we were supposed to do, but was everybody on the same page? We're pretty sure we weren't. It was, it was time for us to really start looking at what is it that we expect from a math program now that we have all this knowledge. So the goal for the team that year was to establish criteria for a mathematics program, what is it that we need, survey the teachers again, review current resources, because we knew we couldn't purchase anything, that wasn't an option that year. How are we going to get teachers on the same page? And then also to give input for the following meeting for professional development, ongoing professional development. Okay, where, how do you? Yeah, thank you. So after that year of working together, the math study team, what we, the results, what we decided was important for you to know, the publishers were not ready, we hated to admit it, and Jeff came in, that was the year you came, Jeff, and supported, agreed that the publishers had not created materials that met the criteria we were looking for. So we were not going to purchase anything, but there were some excellent options. Online, there were several states, and we don't know how they had the time to do it, but had really created some amazing aligned resources for us to use. Meanwhile, the state of Massachusetts, the Department of Education, had a project called Model Curriculum Units, where groups of teachers and administrators meet, and they were designing units for pre-K-12, free of charge, standards-based, using the same template. You know, they look a little bit different depending on the team that created them, but at the time when we met a year and a half ago or so, there were, there was one unit for each grade level, so those were given out to teachers. And we also decided that the teachers just truly need a deeper understanding of those What we agreed to do as a district or K-5, we were going to really devote common planning time to math and discuss it on a regular basis, so it was twice a month again, we were committed to that. We were committed to using that data from Star Math and our common assessments to drive instruction and to really learn how to do that. We were committed to creating common assessments, weren't feeling 100% positive about it, but we were committed to using them and talking about them. We also were committed to keeping those curriculum maps alive and revising them wherever possible, and we agreed that we would use just those selected online resources. In addition to that, Shapali came back, and that, this is this current year, she's been working with us once again, and this was, I'm really impressed with the model that we designed. She, I don't know if you know this, Jeff, but she actually ran a session at a conference lately on the model that Medfield used for professional development because it was so creative. We knew that the teachers had interests, but the administrators had goals, so we blended them together and created this hybrid where teachers could choose three topics of interest for half-day workshops this past year, but in addition to that, they had to commit to one two-day workshop that was one domain, one concept, that they were to dive deeply into and truly understand, to the point where they could be the voice for their grade level. And it was to picture a giant jigsaw puzzle, because now you have two teachers from each grade level going to each of five domains, and then in March, we had them put it all together, so that every teacher saw from a vertical lens, so what, what those domains meant for every grade level. And we have that in a Google Doc that teachers can refer to at any time, because I mean, that's a tremendous amount of information that they were given. But I don't even know if teachers feel it the way I see it, when I listen to them talk about teaching math, it's so different, it's so much deeper, it's so much richer, and it used to feel like that math wasn't their favorite thing to teach, and now I feel like it is, and I think it has a lot to do with this slow approach that we took. I really do feel that even though it was kind of painful, and Medfield has this history of creating their own curriculum all the time, I don't know that I would take back these last couple of years, especially because of the professional development, the collegiality, the collaboration. I've just been so pleased with the benefits, not just of understanding math, but also that PLC, we're all in this together, we're doing this for the children, we, you know, have to listen to one another, we have to trust one another, we can't do it all, so we do have to trust, and I see that, and I hope that you agree with me, well, they wouldn't be here if they didn't, but, no, I'm only kidding. So, we're almost done, Chris.
You had to take your time.
We are at this year.
Can I just interrupt, because I just didn't understand the jigsaw puzzle thing?
Yeah.
So when you, when they're presenting that, is it like, so that the, each grade has an understanding of what they're kind of supposed to pass on vertically, so you're not sitting as a fourth or fifth grade math teacher saying, I think I learned that in second grade, is that the idea?
Yeah, that's the idea, absolutely, but also so that they don't read, they don't have to be redundant, they don't have to teach something that's already been taught, you know, they can move forward.
Right.
And the room had chart papers all over the wall, and it was the vocabulary that was used, because we wanted to have common vocabulary. The children are used to a second grade teacher saying decompose, the third grade teacher should be also. You know, those types of things really started to gel with that jigsaw piece. I, I mean, in a perfect world, I think every teacher should have, had the experience of all five, but that would have been 10 days away from the kids, and that wasn't what we wanted, so. So this year, we're, the math study team, those good old math study team gets back together, and Jeff led a wonderful meeting where we started talking about, okay, here, here we are, what do we need to do, where are we going, and we really recognized, the teachers recognized it themselves, Jeff, me, Donna, Missy, we all, you know, said, put on the table, you have so much more knowledge, such deep knowledge of the standards in pedagogy now, and, and how to shift that instruction in the mathematics classroom, but we need consistency from building to building, you know, that is loud and clear. We needed consist, we need consistent assessments, and, and we need a K-5 insurance plan for that instruction, and that's what a program would do, that, sure, we're all smart people and we can create all these things, but I think we've been slightly driving ourselves crazy, but in fact, there is now, there are options out there that we can purchase that would meet all of the criteria that the team established. So just to give you an idea, I know you're only supposed to put three bullets on a slide, but the criteria took up, I don't know, two or three pages, we just sat in a room and brainstormed. Now that we know what we know, what are we looking for? And obviously, we want to be a lot to Common Core, we want a homeschool connection, because poor parents, you know, we're changing, but they're not sure what it is that we're doing, and so that is like right up there, number two. Again, I keep saying the whole story problems, they should be everywhere in everything that we do, that real life connection. We want professional development, we want ongoing, short professional development that we're on the right track. We want those standards for mathematical practices embedded in everything that we do. We want engaging technology, we wanted vocabulary that we were talking about, differentiation, you know, we talk about that all the time, it's not easy to find the materials that will meet the kids, that need extra help or that need enrichment and everything in between. Programs have that now, we don't have to create it. We want critical thinking as a focus, we want rigor, we want one-on-one practice, and those are just a few of the, but there's probably a few more, but those are the biggies. So at that meeting with Jeff, we're all sitting in a circle, and Jeff, Donna, Missy, and I had taken a look at the options that were out there, and we found the top three programs that we asked this team and potentially all teachers to take a look at. They were BoMath, which is from Hoping, Mifflin, Harcourt, Eureka Math, which is fairly new by Common Core, and then Envision's Math 2.0 by Pearson. We developed a Google survey that had all that criteria and several key questions that we asked the teachers to take a look at, virtual samples of these three programs, and really decide, you know, which one felt like the best fit for Medfield. And we got back together in May, the beginning of May, and had an amazing conversation that really, that everybody took it so seriously and totally brainstormed all the positives and all the negatives for three, these three programs. And to cut to the chase, after careful consideration and thoughtful discussion, the administration and the math study team really full-heartedly agreed, it was slam dunk that this program, Envision's Math 2.0, met everything that we were looking for, and we would love to recommend adopting this program, K-5. I, I've been here a long time, we have not had a K-5 math program for ever, 30 years, I think.
That is, I know, that is so, I, I don't know, I'm vocal, I'm super excited. Chris, pardon me, I'm excited because I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, but.
I know, maybe you are excited, it doesn't tire.
But I think this is so exciting, because I've been, I've had the kids from kindergarten all the way through, that, you know, you kind of get a different thing, and then two kids in different grades have like similar, you know, homework papers, and you're like, what are you doing?
What's going on?
What's going on here? And it's been frustrating, I think, for parents, and I think a lot of parents don't understand that there hasn't been a math curriculum, that it's, you know, not that people haven't worked hard and that it, it worked, but I think there've been some real cracks in that foundation that, you know, and it's not that people aren't working hard or.
We had a curriculum, but we didn't have the program.
Right, and the consistency, and you're kind of, and it felt at times very disjointed.
I know.
It really did to parents.
It did to us, too.
Yeah, sure, I can't imagine being a teacher, I, I can't imagine what you guys do, but, so this is so exciting, I think, I love all those criteria that you had up there.
I know, and I did bring the program sampler, I don't know if you'd like me to leave it.
[Laughter]
What was it about Envision that sent apart from GoMath?
It's more aligned than the other ones, and it's more recent, most recent one, so they've been able to meet all of the needs better because it's published later than the other ones.
So a lot of districts have had Envision, just regular Envision, which they've had a lot of success with that, but what Pearson did is take a look at the feedback they've gotten from those districts over the last couple of years, and they've incorporated all of the improvements in the Envision 2.0.
Right.
It's really incredible, incredible program, it's overwhelming, I think, so we're going to ease into it in terms of what we expect for instruction, but there are so many components in this program. There's, there's a really neat program component for parents that you take, you download an app, and then you take your child's homework, you take a picture of the homework, and it comes up, the app activates a short little video vignette that tells you exactly how the students were instructed that day, so you can help your kid with homework.
That, that is, I'm talking about, that is awesome.
And, I mean, in a.
Because I can't tell you how many times that they'd ask you a question, like, I was not taught that way, then it's a whole big thing, well, what happened to you? How did you end up going to law school? Did you learn this? This is so exciting that, because you really, it's a different way. I know, I don't, I don't give a damn, so that's what I mean, it was so.
And they have a daily planner for the teachers that's very succinct, it's, you know, picture several bars, and you click on each bar, one is like a three-minute video that says to the teacher, this is the big idea, this is what you want children to know at the end of this lesson, and then it has the, the homework piece, it's, and then it has the.
So it teaches the teachers a kind of like a mini lesson or like target this.
Right, it's very targeted, very short, succinct, targeted, that every teacher would be.
So in addition, I think Jeff was saying that each school gets 11 days of PD or something?
We have Shapali again.
Yeah, which is fabulous.
Has she worked with the firm?
She has not worked with Envision, but I've already given her the heads-up, if all goes well tonight, that she should live and breathe Envision.
She'll spend some time in the summer with.
Totally, yes. We have an RMD this summer with the, another group of teachers, and we'll be really pulling it apart and getting to know it, if you'll come.
It sounds like you've been a lot of thought years.
Yeah.
And it was, it should, I was reading that book the other day and saying, oh my gosh, we've been working so hard the last few years, and it's all in one place, and it's consistent for everybody.
So are you still going to use Star? Is Star now obsolete?
We, we really have to, we have to think about that.
Is that another piece of assessment, or do they have their own?
They do.
Are they going to be doing IPAD assessments, or PIGL assessments, or a bit of Bo?
I think both, but Star Math, I, we don't have to renew for another couple of months, and I really want to look at this, it does have a universal screener, so I don't think we're going to need Star in addition, but just assume to have one thing.
Now, do the kids get prepped? I know what, one of my children took Star, and it was just difficult to do a computer when you're used to doing paper tense, so it's.
That's the issue with Park.
Sorry?
That's the issue with Park.
So, you know, and she bombed that, and she's very clever, you know what I mean?
Yes.
So it just jived with reality.
Right.
That I'm wondering, how do you transfer those, how do you teach them those skills? That I'm wondering, how do you transfer those, how do you teach them those skills? Because that's a whole other piece.
That's a whole other piece, but that is something we, that is a reality.
Yeah.
Because it is shifting, so we do have to incorporate those skills. I think we have to keep plugging and having kids use the computer, but have a balance.
Yes, exactly.
So Kim, is this completely online, or is there a textbook or?
There is, there is a consumable book that goes along with it, and the kids can rip it out a page at a time. And what's really nice is that it has the explanation and remediation on one side, and then the homework on the other, so very clear.
But it's not a textbook.
It's not a textbook.
So like, the online component, if things change, which we know they do, you're, you know, spending a lot of money for things to change possibly, and that's why, that's why we like this one, that the online component changes fluidly. So that was really crucial to us. But that there is a workbook to go home, because that's important, too, for KI Coffee Online.
And I forgot to mention, Carrie was part of a group at Dale Street that received a coalition grant, they did. And they went to the NCTM conference, because it was in Boston. And they were the ones, I mean, somebody, Marissa texted me, like, oh my goodness, we found something really amazing. So, you know, little did they know, we had already put that on the list. So they had so much information that they came back really excited about.
I think we budgeted for a new program.
So we budgeted $40,000 in FY16 for it. It certainly is a little bit more than that, a lot more than that, it's about $100,000. But we're actually going to be able to cost saving FY15 to purchase some at the end of FY15, and the rest of the FY16. The neat part of this is, is that what we've been negotiating with Pearson is it gives us our consumables for the next six years. So that, in this price that we're looking at right now, consumable books are in for the next six years, which is great.
Is that good in another thousand?
Yes.
So you could emphasize it over six years?
Correct, right. With a six-year commitment with them, and it's all part of.
Does that include if there's a 2.1 or 2.0?
Yes.
Yeah, it's all included.
Yeah, all updated.
And how much cost savings if we don't have Star?
That is about $15,000, KATF.
But that's a yearly subscription, so it's not a huge cost savings.
Just doesn't, I don't want to over test the kid, you know, there's no need to have to, right? That we don't need to save, whereas, any other questions?
So this is one of those core school community rules, budget policy, and actual textbooks. So this is part of our program these days, it's one of the core basics. We have, I understand, Dr. Marsh's recommendation, and Kim's recommendation is an ambush to approve and adopt.
So.
Second, on the paper?
Aye.
There you go.
Mr. Chair and members of the committee, Michael F. Francesco, who's been here, he was a deal with the update. As you know, that was approved at Tom Meeting, and one of our capital items. It approved $50,000, so Michael's put together an RFP, and Tim thought he helped out with that as well, gave us a lot of great feedback. So Michael just pulls the timeline where we are with that process.
The field study actually includes surveying the existing conditions of six different fields in the town of that field. And also, we want to get the preliminary design options for the detailed cost estimates for the study. So once we're done with the study, not only do we want to, you know, is it going to be field turf? Is it going to be grass? But we also want to know what's our cost, you know, associated. And we're going to do like a menu, and then you guys can select off of that menu if your field is appropriate for the town in that field. So that study was actually, is going to go into advertisement into the central registry. The central registry is a basically database where all the information for any designer construction, for any towns, cities, or state, we have to advertise on that website. And it's a public document where any designer engineer can go around and look at those documents, and then the scientists are going to put into an RFP for that project. So that's going out on June 10. We're also going to advertise in our local paper. We're required by law to advertise in three different publications. One is the central registry, one would be the local paper, and our website will consist of the publication. On June 17, we will hold a briefing session for firms that are interested in this project to explain the project, any questions that they have. That meeting will be held at the superintendent's office on June 17. And then on June 24, at 12:00 noon, all proposals are due to the superintendent's office. Anything that is submitted after noon time will be rejected. Also, the timeline is, according to just a couple of conversations we've had with different designers, the study can take anywhere between three to eight weeks. We're hoping to have the study back to the school committee by sometime in the fall, so we'll be ready for a town meeting, which will be set next, in the new paper.
Are those fields are not eligible for MSA?
Fields are not eligible for MSA.
What is that?
The Mass School Building Authority. It used to be when you built a school, you could get, you had to pay for it, and then when they re-amped it, they wiped that out, but I didn't know if it was standard.
Probably didn't.
And is PBCC involved? Or fields, or is that? It's not, it's not construction.
It's not construction, so.
I guess Tim would know, Tim bombed meetings.
Tim would absolutely, if he knew that question. Our responsibility right now is just to get the field study done, look at different fields along, or within the town. Designated, we lock fields, the high school fields, a few high school fields I'd rather look at. McCutcheon Field, I believe. So there's a few fields that we want to study and look at. And part of this survey is going to tell us, you know, are these fields being used, overused? Are they underutilized? And if they are being overused, what's the best possible material to use on these fields? Is it grass, is it multi-purpose turf field? So we're going to get all these answers that we need in order to bring to the town meeting.
Are they going to do this study over, that they studied over the summer months? Based on information that you get, because obviously, they're not going to be.
So what, what they'll do, what, I've done this in the past in another district. What they'll do is they, you know, either an architect will come in or an engineer firm, or some type of firm will come in that we select that we feel meets the requirements that we're looking for, but also that, you know, they work well with the community. They'll come in and they will interview, you know, high school principals, superintendent, DFLC, right, that they'll interview any youth organizations, high school basketball, excuse me, football, they're looking at soccer programs, lacrosse programs, they're looking at softball, baseball fields, to talk to those youth organizations. But, and they'll get their, they'll get a schedule from us, they've got a schedule from them. They want to know how many kids actually are on the field at a certain period of time, what are the time constraints, you know, are they being used between four to eight? Monday to Friday, they're being used on Saturdays and Sundays, how many hours they're being used on Saturdays and Sundays? And from that information, they can start gathering all the information that we need to start looking at, you know, what type of surface, or are these fields, fields that should be reconditioned in the future.
Is there any, like, parents or things like that involved with it? You know, because I know, just, I'm just saying, because I've had so many phone calls, about what's happening with the turf, that is such a mess, you know, so I didn't know.
You know, with my experience, they don't interview parents. They'll get input from through the school community or through the youth organizations, because parents are involved with this program. And they'll look at, you know, sometimes they'll actually do testing, so they'll go out and actually, you know, do form testing, so they'll go out and take samples.
It's not going to be very hard when they have a high school turf.
Correct.
I mean, they're going to look at that and say, okay, it's a few years overdue.
But the survey, it's a youth survey, not, the survey about, or the decision about what we need in the town, and make recommendations, and then it's us and Boris Leckman and and Parker Rec and town meeting that will sort of have that input.
Okay.
Like you said, we'll give you a menu, so, you know, if we're going to high school multi-purpose field, they're going to say, you know, that's going to be, let's say, $1.2 million, just the field, and then add the track to it. So you'll have, you know, the field, you have the track, you have the scoreboard, you'll have, you know, a sound system, so they'll break all that down for you. And then, you know, you can select from that menu what you feel is important to this community.
Now, is this going to be a capital budget thing solely, or a hybrid, possibly, of fundraising capital?
Well, I think, you know, one of the, one of the issues that we ran into is that, you know, fundraising takes a little bit of time. And I guess from our perspective, what we talked about was that fundraising probably should have started about three or four years ago for the new high school field. For, because we're, if you know that the life is 10 years, and you're going on 11 or 12, I mean, I think you start that around seven or eight. One of the things that we've talked about, one of the biggest obstacles we think we're going to have is that unlike other towns, Medfield has never had a paper field, if you think about it. Right, I mean, it's been done with donations, you know, across the board. So I think that's going to be something that we have to work through and work with the community with. But look at what Bedway has just done, what Ashland has done, and other communities. It's been a community effort, and it's been paid for at town meeting, and bonded up for 20 years or whatever, or 10 to 20 years, depending on the town size. One of the other things that were against us a little bit of this is that many communities will use their Community Preservation Act money, because you can use that towards those recreation facilities. We don't have that, so that's going to be something that's going to be difficult for us, too. But we think it's, we think it's the right way to go. I, in terms of donations, we're looking at some sponsorships, so field sponsorships, as opposed to a bake sale for a field. You know, we're looking for that, some meantime donors to do some naming rights or something like that, which we'd have to obviously go through all of you, but we're talking about options like that.
And the last field was 100% funded by donations, right?
Donations, and then I've been told that someone had a bond, personal bond, to finish the job. By the folks that were involved in it, so that they, they fundraised to a point it was X amount that needed, and someone flowed them on for the rest of the month, so a personal bond to get that done.
And I think it's different, too, if, you know, all the town programs are using the fields, you know, whether it's soccer, lacrosse, baseball, soccer, you know, everybody's using them as opposed to just nothing.
Their use profile has definitely changed last year.
Yeah, yeah.
And next year's, if this gets down to time, there is a lot of debt coming off the levy next year. A lot of bonds are being retired, so it's a favorable, favorable time to do it, because you could bond for it without materially increasing taxes, since there's a lot of existing bonds that are coming off.
Well, we'd be curious to see what the study tells us. I'm sure they're going to say that we're, we don't have enough fields for the town, I'm sure. But, you know, I spoke to Kevin Ryder today, and he was of that sense, too, that he's trying to get, he has more requests than he can schedule for the town fields. It's a situation that isn't just a school issue, it's a town issue.
Oh, it is definitely, I mean, even look, lacrosse, Jamboree for the little boys, they, they're playing on baseball fields, and they're just, not enough, and you go to some of these towns, and they're just, fields are unbelievable, a lot of space.
And, I mean, the other reason why I wanted to do the study is because, you know, studies show that if you do more than one field, you have better pricing. So if you drive down the cost of your local bond, if you do more than one field, it's in our advantage to do so. But we want to make sure that we have, you know, our facts correct, and that we are doing what's best for the community. So we're not just looking at one field, but we're looking at, you know, let's look at the community, let's see what half of fields, and let's see what's the best possible way of getting more than one field out for the community.
Right, and we talked about this in a meeting earlier in the fall. I mean, we could have taken a different approach and said, we just want a high school field replaced. We could have just done that, as opposed to looking at what's best for the entire community and bringing everyone aboard, so we thought that was a good one.
Now, are you looking at declining enrollment at all, like how that affects the team, or?
They, they actually, they will, so they'll, and we have that data. They're going to ask, what's the trend, our trend, and then what does it look like in the next 10, 15, you know, years? We have that data, we're going to be providing with that data. You know, we are saying that our loan is going down, but we have new developments going up in Medfield, so that's going to actually drive the loan up, so we have to take that into consideration also. So there's a lot of factors.
There might be an equal amount of teams, I'm not sure, maybe it's more kids by, I'm not sure.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Donations, Dr. Martin.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, I'd like to just read some donations and ask for your approval. $400 from the ReLock CSA to grade three for their end-of-the-year celebration. $430.96 from the ReLock CSA for fans of the ReLock School. $150 from the Blake Middle School CSA for improvements to the Blake Middle School Playground recess equipment. $844.87 anonymous gift to Dale Street Technology, which is from the same person that did the anonymous gift last month for Blake Technology. $2,839 from the ReLock CSA for author visits. $187.92 for two IKEA spinning chairs. And $84.99 for an osmology system for iPad, which extends the technology use. So that's some of the technology that was locked for, for deals.
Is that like homework for iPad?
Kind of. It actually increases the capacity to do a lot more artistic works on the iPad, relatively.
Is there a motion to approve and accept? Second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
And I'd like to just, you know, once again, thank our CSA and others for donating. It's just, you know, great support for the community, and it's nice that we can recognize at the school community level and receive these funds and give them the support that they need, that they've earned, so I appreciate it, but they're going to force. Mr. Chair, the whole business is Elementary School Day Committee. We had our final meeting of the year a couple weeks ago, and we're going to actually do up a kind of an FAQ or summary for the year on what we've accomplished as a committee and what we're looking at for the next year. I don't know if Anna May was also on the committee, if you want to share with you about that.
Yeah, I suppose I invite everyone to look at the minutes online. It's right on the medfield.net homepage. They need to be updated with the year-end summary. However, we started the year with, all right, what are we looking for in the ideal school day? So there are teachers, administrators, parents on this committee. And by the, always from the get-go, I think the most powerful thing that I came out of, and a lot of teachers had mentioned it also at our very last meeting, was that we're one team. It's not administrators, the teachers, the parents. We're all working together to really improve the day for our children. So essentially, brainstormed a lot of ideas at the beginning of the year, and predominantly, the longer day was the biggest theme. And say, for example, we added 30 minutes to the day, what would that look like? So there were many meetings in terms of crafting, because we wanted to hear from Casted Net for all the teachers, so we compiled a survey for all the teachers, and we've got all the data now, so 86 of 120 odd teachers, was it 120? Took the survey. So it was a lot of A, B, or C questions, but the really rich information came out from the open-end responses. And that varied from, I took a couple, in terms of the big themes of this, was, you know, consult time would be affected if, you know, this, they thought, all right, if it was 30 minutes of student instructional time, what does that mean for his or her day? So consult time was a big theme. Instructional time would be great, there would be more face-to-face. However, where's the, where's the time to plan those lessons? So there's so many components, you know, we think, oh, just throw in an extra 30 minutes. It's not like that, there are so many layers. Another ones were, teachers said they would have longer chunks of uninterrupted face time, which was important, and, but also, there's things, there needs to be some sort of cultural shift. You know, some things that have been going on maybe can change a little, or, you know, so, so that's kind of the next step in the fall. We have our next meeting in October. But at the PINS in the fall, the principals are going to mention the School Elementary School Day Committee and the work that's going into it. So 30 minutes isn't being added in September. ReLock's not starting the same time as all the other schools in September. So that, it's just what we discovered, there's just so many layers. But it's a great group of people, and we're really working together.
And they volunteer a lot of time.
Yeah, yeah, these are long meetings.
They are.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, no, but it's worthy.
Yeah, that's great.
We appreciate you and Tim both doing.
Yeah, it's, it's good stuff. Yeah, it's, it's, it's good stuff.
Dr. Martin's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So FY16 budget update, not a lot to report at this point, other than we're still doing some hiring and, but the August meeting will have all that done hopefully. But the, the principals are busy doing some hiring of, of positions where folks have retired. I mean, we're not adding any positions, you know, from the budget, so it's, it's really just replacing retirements and, and folks that have decided to go other places. So they're, they're doing that right now. In terms of FY15, our next meeting, Michael will have some information on the close-up for FY15 and where we, where we stand with that. So he's working on that right now and he'll be having that information. I'd like to table the research and development if I could for the next meeting.
Sure, okay.
I gave you some information in your packet. One of the things I've been looking at on the spreadsheet is that it's kind of difficult to get a sense of what that is from that, what I gave you.
Yeah.
So I'm going to tease it out a little bit so it's, it's more user-friendly for you folks to take a look at it. But I guess the, the bottom line is that our teacher's doing some really good work this summer, and I want to just highlight some of that in our next meeting for you so you can get a sense of what they're doing. Our Dale Street parking lot project is ongoing, I think I put the minutes in your, in your packet. So construction meetings are every Wednesday morning at nine, and the building committee and the construction company have been fabulous as far as accommodating us. They've been really good about when they start working, after the kids get in, and then giving some time where they're not anywhere near the road when, when the kids are leaving. They've had some requests that, that we've denied, things like when they cut trees, other work they wanted to do during MCAS time, which they've been great, they've been extremely flexible, because I think they're way ahead of schedule from where they are. Because originally this was going to be done after the kids got out. So now that they've got a few weeks head start, they, leaves them to be a little bit more flexible than they anticipated being. So their end date, they're anticipating is August 15th. At the last meeting last Wednesday, they're looking more at the end of July, that they're a couple of weeks ahead. So they're going to look at, at doing some of the subsurface work this week, and then they look to be paving right after the kids come to school. So they'll look at paving the end of June, first couple weeks of July. It, it's amazing what goes into just, just the parking lot. You know, you think, you know, get it all out of there, put some new dirt in, put some subsurface and pave it, it'll be done. But they had to put catch basins in and stormwater basins, so they've done a really good job with that. And again, I can't thank them enough for the flexibility they've had, because I've worked on other projects in other districts. And I'll never forget, as a principal, 15 years ago, in the middle of dismissal on one way, one, one, one place, one road in, one, one road out, and a huge steel truck came with steel delivery for the cafeteria that we're doing that was supposed to be done five o'clock. And lots of times, they just don't care, because they're on the schedule too. This group has done very good to work with. And I let them know that last week, and of course they laughed and said, well, give us a couple of weeks, we're only susceptible.
Kids will be gone by then.
Yeah, exactly. And, and I said that to them, I don't care what you do after that, once the kids are gone, you have to really be careful of, of, you know, what, the safety of kids is the number one step. And Kim can attest to, I should have asked when she was here, but because of the proximity of this project and the way that Dale Street is situated with the, the auditorium is there and the classrooms really on the other side, you really don't hear a lot of noise. You really don't. So the kids at recess will hear it when they're out there. But in terms of a classroom, unless you're right on that corner with the window up, it's been really, really good with that too. So, so far, so good. And I know that, you know, we were part of the whole town project in this, and it was something that our teachers wanted for a long time, and I'm glad that I got to put it in the project, so. In terms of district recognition, just again, I've always been talking about already, just a great graduation yesterday, I thought, you know, a wonderful day for our kids and our families, and just a special group of kids as they are each year, and all have their own personalities. I'm just really happy for them, went off well. And to thank all the parents that, that volunteered for the all-night grad party last night, that's a huge undertaking, which takes a whole year to plan and for folks to be there to make sure our kids are safe from, from 10 o'clock to 5:00 in the morning. We just really appreciate it. So thanks to all those parents that, that did that. And then Robert had mentioned earlier too, about our sports team still in contention and stage tournaments, which we love to see our kids excel outside of the classroom. So good luck to all of them. So that's all that was to share with you.
On the FY16 budget, you know, the thing I'm panicked about is the park at Medfield. Given that you spoke before our last meeting, you mentioned it last meeting, you spoken to them, any further update from them on there?
No, they haven't given us an update. They did touch base last week and just, just to let us know that they're putting more frames out for folks to, to come in. They are opening September 15th.
Couldn't be a worse time.
Right. So like we've talked about before, if 65 kids in one grade were in trouble, if it's spread over 13, then we can manage it. So it's, it's kind of that word limbo, unpredictable about what, what's going to happen.
Sixty-five kids spread over 13 grades, I mean, it could, we've got some grades that are sort of on the cusp of what we think is an appropriate class size, it could kick them over.
Correct. Especially grade five and grade three, which we reduced based on home efficiency, provided purposes. So if we hit three and five, there could be an issue.
If we have an emergency, there is a physical space to, to open up in any classrooms to me?
There is.
But then you have to hire.
And we'll be the only one that'd be, would be difficult in space. Could be out of the extra pool that can be.
Right, right.
So if it's a lot of younger students in grade one and in K, then we have to look at restructuring some rooms over there. But I think we have definitely some movement at ReLock and Dale.
Things are keeping up to date. Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's just so unpredictable, you just don't know what's going to happen.
Every time a jar, I mean, it's, you know, development is development and, you know.
It's big.
It's big.
It's big.
And every time I look at it, I think, well, the kids are.
Yeah.
You think 92 units, and then you look at it on West Street and like, whoa, that's big. That's a lot of units, especially with 200 damage.
Thank you. As for the part of the meeting we set aside, public input?
Actually, it ties right into that. I'm Terry Fox, Medfield resident.
Take as much time as Mrs. Cave took.
It's going to be, so back in 2009. So these 90 units, the next biggie is Medfield State.
Right.
June 11th, they're having public participation, it's three hours, there's also the gazebo and the fourth and fifth grade concert. But this is the start of a process that clearly will head towards either development or some combination that's going to have huge repercussions. So just encouraging, and actually, a couple of people had reached out to me and suggested that this would be the kind of project that students, when Mr. Diserby came in and talked about civic engagement. The state hospital is a fascinating thing for the kids potentially to get involved as we head towards the fall. But in the immediate, June 11th, big meeting, and that's really going to dictate what the developers are going to do, what the HBP is going to do, the consultant they hired, that's the outreach to the community. And there are, you know, 600 units and develop like crazy, and then there's bulldoze the buildings and make it open space, and, and those are the two extremes in there. But what they're going to end up doing is going to be whatever voices we as a community do. So just encourage people, it's the 11th, probably don't want to see it by then, but there's lots more, there are two other sessions that are going to take place on that. And I don't think there's any decision that's going to impact. These 90 units could be dwarfed by potential development there. So just encouraging, I know you guys have more than enough on your plates, but spreading the gospel, spreading the word to get people out and participate and have a voice in it.
So where's that being, you know, being done?
It's here in the school. So it's at the high school in the cafeteria on June 11th.
So the principals and I have, have told the committee that we'll be queuing that out tomorrow. So that they, they, they reached out to us and said, and we sent it out on Thursday, packet, I believe, last Thursday.
Yep.
And then we, they asked us to use social media to get out to all of our followers, so that more people can get out. I know Richard has sent out on his, his Twitter. I saw it, I think I saw it today. So I think we're going to try to do blitz out there to get the word out so folks can just, it's just really important, as Jerry said, for all of us.
There was something in the hometown weekly last week, I know there have been email chains spreading around, but I think people don't always understand the importance of actually attending and being present at these meetings, it's, it is so important.
Right. Well, they've done the visioning session, and I think a lot of people thought that, and that was the appetizer.
Yeah.
That kind of started, but that information's been passed on to VHP. But VHP is a developer, and that's what they do. So there's a lot of fear that that's going to be a lot of pressure on the infrastructure here, and, but on the other side, we also have the tax base, so.
I had that chair on my list, thanks to safety. I was at a party not too long ago where people were saying, complaining to me, because I'm on school committee, I must know everything about the public, right? Safety building, I must have a portion. How could these have all happened without us knowing? I mean, people, I literally never heard a town meeting, you know, didn't, you know, they knew we voted this March because, you know, we, we all together made sure that was known. So do we vote, when do we vote again? November? So it's troubling to me how little people know, and it's incumbent on all of us who do know.
Get the word out.
Okay. Thank you, John.
We, our next meeting is next Monday, and I believe it's the last one until summer.
It is.
It will be a pretty full agenda, as tonight was, we have school improvement plans from all the elementary schools, including Mrs. Cave and, I'm just eating ice cream. I love, I love Kim, she knows that. There'll also be a report on the Dale Street music pilot and the survey that went along with that. We'll recognize some teacher retirements as early as soon, and have an annual report from food services. That's a lot to accomplish in one night. It's, I mean, that looks like a three-hour meeting to me, just with those four things, so keep hitting 40. Nick, you have anything to add? This is a time, I mean, we set aside, you know, you probably told me this, right? We set aside a time in the meeting where we all get to say something if we haven't gotten to say it, remind the community about something, Mr. Fox did, let us know, anything you'd like to add.
Well, for student council, we have elections for the student council for next year, it's, they're on Wednesday, so right now there's really nothing going on with that election. So they'll be a whole member of people on Wednesday.
Thank you. Ellie?
I just want to say, congrats again to the class of 2015, and a special thanks to all the teachers that have done such a great job, have done all the way through. And I wish Carrie hadn't left already, but she sent a really sweet note to my son, he was in the third grade class, 10 years ago, and to all the kids in our class, and just our memories of him, and, you know, how proud she was and also, you know, I mean, teachers like that. And he ended up actually writing a rec essay about her last year in Spanish class, which I read, was, which was so, you know, beautiful that she was one of his most memorable teachers. So, you know, all of these grades just really make a difference to get these kids to the 12th grade and octo college and beyond, and to make a real impact in the world. So I just want to say, such a thanks to all the teachers.
Well, did have that one.
Yeah, it was impressive, all the speeches, you fellows did a great job, Robert, the students, our famous Andy, hysterical, all the kids were just, they were great and so proud. And I also want to mention also the all-night grad. I don't know if any of you guys went to see the, the space, it was, it was incredible. So the two Tracys, Tracy Rogers, Tracy Fedak, and an army of people, even a life-sized operation game about that was incredible. But this morning, the cleanup crew, hordes of people came, it was done, like it was split. One woman said her cousin lives in, in another town, and two people showed up for cleanup, and I thought, oh, no! But it just goes to show you that just everybody comes together, and it's, it's a beautiful sight. And I also want to mention Mr. R. and also Nat Vaughn, and I think it's Mr. Heim, the Coalition recognized those people for special awards. Mr. R. got the Robert Seagull Global Education Award. And another Blake group got the, I think, Mr. Cohen?
Seventh grade, sorry. Uh, social studies.
Social studies, the Viscones. So kudos to them. The Marin Band had their concert at the Warms very far yesterday, that was really fun. And I wished, and I forgot to say it the last time, but if you're watching, JJ and Riley, good luck. But they've been great, so yes, and welcome again, we do.
I've said plenty in the last one, last phase.
Yep, it's a long one.
There, motion to adjourn.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.